Call this meeting in order.
Seven o'clock.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Norcan, be recorded by other local media. Do you plead rise with pleasure and allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Do board member reports. Mr. O'Leary, do you want to kick us off in your business?
Very just briefly, I just want to wish everybody happy holiday season. Be traveling, travel safely. Time to district just went out of state a little while ago, rain with some snow. Hoping for a white Christmas and a little extra overtime for the DPW, but really wish everybody a happy holiday season, joyful, and a happy new year. Thanks, Chairman.
Mr. Walner.
Good.
Okay. Mrs. Gonzalez.
I will echo that and wishing everybody a happy, safe holiday. And I wanted to acknowledge this past Sunday, the Veterans Events Committee laid the wreaths for the wreaths across America at the Riverside Cemetery. Just can't say enough about this Veterans Events Committee and what a great team they are. Debbie Aldridge and Laurie Martinez really rallied it up and got this to happen. It started small this year, but they really want to try to do the whole cemetery. We weren't sure how many donations would come in and how many people would respond to it, but it was a great response and I think we can go bigger next year. So kudos to the Veterans Events Committee for getting that done.
Mr. Massey.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to address some comments that were made at the last meeting. We ended our last meeting with Mr. Walner. I brought up some suggestions to the board on how to read some motions, motions that were from me in regards specifically to appointments. And Mr. Walner mentioned to me that I should go do my homework, I should go study, and after you look forward to, after you look at these policies, bring forward suggestions, very specific procedures about how we handle this. I do want to thank Mr. Walner here today for recommending that I do do my homework because what happens when you do do your homework is you find out a lot of information, Mr. Walner. Now, did I look at all the select board policies before last meeting? Certainly not. I've looked through a lot of the select board policies since yourself, Mr. O'Leary, and town council would refer to select board policies from my hearing, so I've certainly done my homework and that's why I'm happy that you asked. Now, I get the select board policies here that I printed right after my meeting. You'll see on the top right, it says highlighted, "Not being followed." So I suggest you, Mr. Walner, go do your homework because that's what happens that we do not follow, but specifically to your appointments that you want me to do my homework. Funny that my recommendation is exactly what is in those policies, Mr. Walner.
That's not true.
Okay, well, that's why I have the book here today and I am happy to read from that. Incumbents who wish to be reappointed must indicate so in writing to the select board. I have that highlighted. I didn't see any of those. These vacancies shall be published at least 30 days prior to appointment. We didn't hit that. We, oh, here we go. All individuals applying for the position shall be put into nomination. The individuals who receive a majority vote from the select board shall be appointed to the appropriate Board of Committee. Now, Mr. Walner, what I'm getting at more or less is I didn't appreciate the way you wanted to make me look bad, but I did my homework. It didn't pan out that way, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. I'm just going to echo the board member said about have a great holiday, happy new year. There's a lot we can all, all of us individually complain about in our lives, but you know, as my father says, the fact that we're all on this side of the grass, we should be thankful for. So, you know, again, thank you everyone for also putting up with the select board and sometimes our very long meetings because I know that in between there, there is some good stuff, but you gotta kind of listen to it all, so appreciate that. Thank you. We can move on to public comments. Mr. Goberto, would anyone like to speak?
Kevin Mackey, 18 Adam Street. I've been coming to these meetings now for six, seven months and I just wanted to sort of thank, thank you, thank you guys for volunteering your time and my calling this, other people here that are here almost on a regular basis. So I just wanted to, so after the meeting, just have a small little token of appreciation for the holidays and again, just thank everyone for their hard work and volunteerism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't get that.
Mr. Goberto, anyone online?
No, I see him here.
Okay. Please continue.
I know, that's good. Hey, Chairman, the next item is to accept a gift from the North Reading Fire Department. Joined with me by Fire Chief Tom Statts, who's here. I'd love to come here to the table and to Boden and give a quick overview and maybe some introductions as well.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chair, through you. Please. First off, on behalf of the North Reading Fire Department, wishing you guys and everybody in the room a happy and safe holiday. Next, I just wanted to really thank and recognize Melinda Costanzo and Joe Smith from Adam Street who organized the GoFundMe page while we were fighting the brush fire in their area in Middleton and not only organized that GoFundMe page and the donation that you're about to accept today or hopefully accept, but also organized a lot of the logistics regarding food and drop offs at the fire station as well. So I really just wanted to take a minute and thank them very much because your support for us, your support for us while we're doing our job is just, it's, words can't express it, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you, there is a motion that we prepare to accept the gift. The general acceptance rate is under the control of the Fire Chief, but I know he's overblinded in feedback he can get from the donors and the donors as well. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept funds in the amount of $1,500 for the Fire Department gift account.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Just to go, the individuals here would just like to make some sort of comments in relation to their appreciation. I mean, it was a little warm and smoky in your neighborhood.
GoFundMe, we're just grateful that they were there to keep the fires from our homes.
Yeah, they worked day and night.
And endlessly, they were fighting those fires, so we're grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for acknowledging the reference and we all know that times like this is when we really, I mean, we appreciate the department, the first responders anyway, but when things like this occur, we see the importance, first of all, their training and their ability to respond, their willingness to respond, the mutual aid that we get from other communities and then assisting other communities and what's all about and your recognition from your neighborhood and the area in town is great. Appreciate it, thank you very much. Kevin, too, I know you're up there.
Yeah.
Fortunately, we had some rain, but things are quiet.
I'll keep you coming.
Yeah, yeah. Could I just say, you know, we all always appreciate and we all knew that you were working night and day and we, I think collectively, everybody's appreciating that, but it takes people like you to step up and make that happen, give that portal for people to say, yes, I want to contribute. So thank you for that.
Well, we got a real outpouring of a lot of people that wanted a gift, so we could just go to each hole and pick out the funds. Then we got calls from restaurants that wanted to make food, so.
But it was you stepping up to allow that to happen, so you know, that's what it takes, so thank you for that.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Thank you again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The way we know the Fire Department will be working 24/7 and over Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Related to that, on November 22nd, Fire Chief and I asked the Select Board as part of a regional declaration of emergency to consider a resolution that had approved at that meeting for a declaration of emergency. For the period of time that the Fire Department was busy responding to the brush fires along the North Reading route to town line and elsewhere here in North Reading at times as well, I've talked with Chief Statts. We've been monitoring conditions in terms of drought and as well as in the field and Chief told me this, at the location was over the weekend that you were through there, at least one time, twice, I think you told me?
Every weekend.
Every weekend. So keeping an eye on that location and conditions are certainly favorable and so I and my counterparts in the surrounding communities are recommending that the declaration of emergency be rescinded effective today. You know, we will continue to pursue avenues for funding for our expenses, which were in excess of $100,000 responding to this emergency, this long duration emergency. We haven't identified any sort of immediate funding source yet, but I do continue to have conversations with the Finance Director, I've had at least one conversation with our legislative delegation, will probably have follow up now that it appears things have concluded and hopeful there might be something out there to help us. Not too optimistic about a federal declaration of disaster based upon the loss level, probably won't hit that criteria, but you know, certainly we'll be looking into whatever options there are and just want to say that we appreciate, you know, the board's willingness to take the declaration up on kind of short water. We recognize it was so late in the emergency that we did so, but we felt it was important to have a board reading. And with that, we did prepare a motion that I think Mr. Massey, Ms. McNeil slightly modified to reflect how it should read with regard to rescinding emergency.
Did we rescind, did we rescind this ban before today?
We have not, no, not at all. 100%. The only thing that was rescinded was the outdoor burning. And that's out of the control of the Fire Chief.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind declaration of local regional emergency that declared on November 22nd, 2024, as of today, Monday, December 16th, 2024.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing on, Mr. O'Leary. Oh, sorry. Mr. Massey, do you have? Oh, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mr. Massey.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
Thank you. Thank you to you and the department for all your efforts. Thank you.
Happy holidays, Chris.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So move on to appointments.
I believe we're good.
I'm first.
I will, maybe just as a overview, so for anyone who didn't see it, we sent by email a very long document with all of the motions and all of the candidates and then as we got feedback from the individual liaisons on the board, we made some edits to that and that was emailed this afternoon and uploaded into the meeting packet. I believe that's the printed version that might be in front of Mr. Massey for this evening. We know each circumstance is different, each circumstance is individual, so there is the extent that needs to be discussed. We certainly have house sons, you know, led by the liaison.
All right, so I can kick it off for the Board of Appeals. So in the process, over a process of two weeks, I went about contacting everyone who filled out a form for this evening. In the last packet that came out, all the names appear, however, those crossed out are either those that I spoke to and no longer had an interest and also those that after two weeks of emailing, just no one responded. So those are names that were, you know, half because I didn't talk to them and the other, you know, we had three I couldn't get in touch with after multiple attempts and then three who after we spoke just were no longer interested based on, you know, multitude of reasons. So we'll be voting for the two full members and when we get to them, I will explain why I recommend them and then three associate members. They all do, each have a different term, just because the terms staggered, not, sorry, everybody doesn't come to all at once, so just in case anybody was wondering, so. Okay, Mr. Massey, can you please read the first motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination following name for appointment as a full member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. One opening.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez.
We're the names. You should just read the names.
Yeah, there should be a list of.
Michelle Boden, current associate member, Stephen Corielli, Matthew Martin, Corey Morris, Michelle Patel, Brendan Riley, current associate member, and Mark Roche.
Thank you. As the liaison, so in consultation with the chair, Mr. Brin of the Board of Appeals, and I spoke also to Michelle, she's an associate member, done a great job and she, you know, natural progression to a full member who said that she wanted to do it and also I may add that for her and I'll just wrap it all up in one. In the next motion, also my recommendation is another associate member where they pretty much have been acting as full members because Mrs. Lockhart has had a scheduling conflict the last few months, so and since Jennifer Pratt did not come back and resign her term, so effectively they've already been doing the job and continuity is very important. Just like I'll say for all my recommendations include the associates, I don't have to repeat it again, asking time commitment was important this time around because although it's every couple of weeks, virtual, we do have a pending 40B application for the 20L location and when that hits the ZBA, those are in person and depending on how it goes, those are, those could be some significant hours at first during that period and that's something I discussed with everybody, so just so you know, so I don't have to repeat it again. Everyone I recommend said that there would be no issue with the time commitment, which the chairs of every committee, including when we appointed CPC, was one of the first questions, right? Are you sure you can do this? I know you want to, but can you? So any questions for my fellow members? For Michelle Boden, she's the first recommendation I have for full member. Okay, Mr. O'Leary.
Michelle Boden.
Mr. Walner.
Michelle Boden.
Mr. Massey.
Michelle Boden.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Michelle Boden.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination following name for appointment as a full member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. One opening.
You can skip Michelle.
Sorry. Stephen Corielli, Matt Martin, Corey Morris, Michelle Patel, Brendan Riley, and Mark Roche.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Same thing, everything I just said about Michelle, same exact thing. The chair is also concurs, Mr. Brin, and I spoke to Brendan and they've been doing a great job, so I, again, continuity is pretty important because we've had a lot of fluid the last few years, so my recommendation to Brendan Riley. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Stephen Corielli has applied to this position for the last three years, he's 40-year resident, so my nomination's going to be Stephen Corielli.
I do have him as a recommendation for associate.
Understood.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
Brendan Riley.
Mr. Walner.
Brendan Riley.
Mr. Massey.
Stephen Corielli.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Brendan Riley.
And the chair is Brendan Riley.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination with following names for appointment, reappointment as associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. One opening. Stephen Corielli, Matthew Martin, Corey Morris, Morris, Michelle Patel, and Mark Roche.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion. So Mr. Corielli, on him and also the next one, Matt Martin, I'm not going to spend too much time just because we had the luxury and privilege of listening to them very in-depth during the CPC. They both threw their hats in the ring, so I spoke to both of them about, it was kind of the same discussion. One, they both committed that if they were to be appointed to the ZBA, neither of them, neither of them plan to run for the CPC position. I felt like it was a fair question just because being nominated and then in May running, I mean, that's, that's not good for especially continuity and again, the focus is that we may have a 40B in the middle of all this, so that wouldn't be the best time for one of the associates not to, you know, to then bow out. And again, same from a time commitment standpoint, qualification wise, you know, Mr. Corielli has a lot behind him, you know, and I did explain to, I did speak to him and I spoke to some other members who have waited, some of these applications, we had a flurry of openings on the ZBA, all pretty much the majority early last year, late 2023. So the thing is that if, for any position, if you fill out a form and it's not available, it just, there's really nothing we can do until somebody doesn't either want to do it or we don't, or something opens up. And these terms do, are staggered and they last, you know, some longer than others, but they're usually three-year terms unless you're like 2026, just because they have to be staggered, so. But my recommendation for this associate spot is Mr. Stephen Corielli. Any questions from my board members? Mr. O'Leary.
Stephen Corielli.
Mr. Walner.
Stephen Corielli.
Mr. Massey.
Stephen Corielli.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Stephen Corielli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment, reappointment as associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. One opening. Matt Martin, Corey Morris, Michelle Patel, and Mark Roche.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Same thing, very impressive, just like Mr. Corielli when it came to the CPC interview and just like some other members, the next one I'll recommend that it just, it's a point of life now where there's time to do it, you know? A lot of the times we have great candidates that just can't throw their hat in the ring because they don't have time to do it, so that was not going to be an issue for Mr. Martin and it's interesting because I think for his experience in general, he's usually on the other side of the fence when it comes to this, representing, you know, somebody, right, who, private citizen, company who wants it, so I think that's really good because like, you know, I kind of, sometimes the best, the best prosecutors in court is the one that was the criminal defense attorney first, right? And I've seen that actually a couple times, so I know it's not a legal thing, but, so any questions? Mr. O'Leary.
Matthew Martin.
Mr. Walner.
Matthew Martin.
Mr. Massey.
Matthew Martin.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Matthew Martin.
And the chair is Matthew Martin.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of following names for appointment as associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31st, 2025. Sorry, Corey Morris, Michelle Patel, and Mark Roche.
So my last recommendation is going to be Mr. Mark Roche. He resided a long time and he's now at a point, again, where he's available to be able to volunteer for this experience behind it and again, one of the biggest things was the time, can't stress it enough, that, you know, with three people I spoke to that decided not to do it, a couple, I think, you know, as soon as they heard 40B in person time, it's like, it's like, I can tell they were trying to figure out a nice way to get off the phone, which is fine, you know? I cold called in my early days in my job, so I know it, but Mark did not, I mean, it was, you know, understanding that, you know, that could happen, so that was an important trait, so that's going to be my final. And Mr. Brin, again, I should have mentioned it, concurred with the associate members as well. Any questions? Mr. O'Leary.
Mark Roche.
Mr. Walner.
Mark Roche.
Mr. Massey.
Mark Roche.
And Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mark Roche.
And the chair is Mark Roche. And I'll also say for those, one second, Mr. O'Leary. From Mr. Morris and Patel, very impressive resumes, which tends to happen. I've noticed that, you know, it's my first time around, we've had so many because during COVID, there was kind of a lull, right? So that the other issue was that you had a lot of people apply all at once, starting from 2022 on and I did say that there's definitely openings somewhere else, but this is, the ZBA outside of the three elected bodies in town, they have the most direct impact from an authority standpoint for people, you know, every day in town. So it's something where it's sought out and we are fortunate enough to have so many qualified people. I mean, it was kind of like when I, and even a few that didn't respond, when I kind of looked, I'm like, everybody's qualified, like I can't, not that you want to check someone off the list, but you know, if someone's background is like, I've been a chef for 30 years, I want to be in the ZBA, I'm going to be like, all right, what were you, what were you doing in that kitchen? You know, so here it was like everybody had like an experience in it, so I did recommend that, and it's something we'll be doing next month, that for those that work here, another thing they should look at is the Economic Development Committee, which needs members, but it's just as important because some of the best ideas that we've actually executed have come through them, so. So thank you, thank you everybody for applying. I'm very happy that now we have a full ZBA and now we will, we will see their performance when this 40B hits town, so hopefully, you know, everybody on the board works out, so thank you for that. Mr. Goberto.
I think we're up to cable advisory committee. Yeah, so as far as the cable advisory committee, we do have two or three applicants for it. The chair and I have not had the opportunity to fully vet everybody yet, so that will be hopefully done by the first of, first of January, first week of January, but fortunately, we have, we have some interest, which is good, so we'll be reporting back hopefully in our next meeting.
Next, Commission, Mr. Boies.
Yeah, I'm also going to be delaying on this one as well. I'd like to place an ad in the paper because what we're asking for from the Commission on Disabilities is to be able to set up a once a year public meeting for people to become involved on both the youth and the adults who have disabilities and so I'm looking for a particular skill set that'll be able to do that on a regular basis and put together a program that'll be very proactive. So, you know, I'm not disallowing Kathleen or Thomas, I do want to open up the pool to more people, so I believe that we have an ad already prepared that we can put in the paper.
We could update it to reflect this and whatever other committees are in need of additional candidates.
That'd be great, yeah. Like to run that as soon as we can so I can, you know, have a wide pool to pick from. It's a unique skill set that we're looking for. Thank you.
Conservation.
Conservation. We actually have a full complement of the Conservation Commission, our last appointments, completed the Conservation Commission. We have some liaison, excuse me, associate memberships available, the vetting for all of those at this point, we have some appointments for this week to meet, to speak with people this week, so again, the associate membership will be coming back to the board with, hopefully at the next meeting. So we're just still vetting people who are interested in serving, some who are interested in serving as full members, not associates, and so. And so, we're just vetting them as to if they're interested in serving as an associate membership. So, we're hopefully completing that this week and get back that first week in January.
Mr. Massey, on the constables?
Yeah, real quick, I'm just going through all these, kind of skipped over that now we're, everyone's nominated now for policies. We're all set, we're good. Because now we got everyone who, everyone who applied is now nominated. Like I asked, which I'm happy about, I'm just wondering, want to make sure we're following Mr. Wallace's policies.
It appears Mr. Wallace's policies.
Right.
Okay, well, to answer your question, it does appear since all these names are here, I'm assuming that they are, since all the names are here.
For constables, Mr. Chair, I just want, I called all these individuals over the weekend. The ones who responded are Douglas Lab, who is incumbent, Bill Walsh, who was a current DPW employee. I think we're going through some, some check-in with town council to make sure it's kosher. And Carla Ayivana, who was interested, she just needs, is unaware of the requirements on what is needed to apply for this very, very.
Unique.
Unique, that's the word I was looking for.
Yeah.
This, this appointment is much more different than the other sustainability force, any, any of those where it involves a police background check. So, I have been speaking with the police to make sure that we're on the same page of where we're at, if any, any help I'm here. But for the time being, would like to nominate Douglas Lab.
Second.
It's your motion, Mr. O'Leary.
It's not your motion.
Yeah, 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 that's a big motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a process-serving constable for a term to expire on December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Robert Barcos, Douglas Lab, Carla Ayivana, John J. Martin, Stacy McCauley, David Rosati, Michelangelo Zafarlos, and Will Walsh. And again, recommending Douglas Lab at this time.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez, any further discussion? None, Mr. O'Leary?
Douglas Lab.
Mr. Wallner?
Douglas Lab.
Mr. Massey?
Douglas Lab.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Douglas Lab.
And the chair is Douglas. Cultural council? Mr. Wallner?
Yep, I spoke to Frances, who's the chair, she's not prepared to bring anybody forward at this point, so she'll be looking at January to do that.
Historical commission?
We're up to date. We have a full historical commission, so we're good.
All right. Historic district commission?
Again, there is some criterion that are required of people to be in historic district commission, while we have some openings, they aren't necessarily, first of all, we haven't got the applicants, so we're going to try and hone in and we will piggyback on the advertisement for the other commission on disability, looking for people with specific backgrounds to meet the criteria for historic district commission. So, we're working on it.
Ms. Gonzalez, library trustees?
Yes. I spoke with Jennifer Thompson, Trinsel Thompson, the chair, and she is recommending Heather Severs, who is a current full member. So, we will take that recommendation. Also, there is an associate opening, but she's not prepared to put that forward until January. So, we'll bring that forward in January.
Mr. Massey, can I please have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as a full member to the library trustees for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. One full opening. We have Ed Baye, Robert Barcos, Elizabeth Decker, Frank Falcone, Sarah Harrington, Thomas Kizilak, Akim Rahman, Ellen Schrantz, Heather Severs, Frances Tonnaguzzo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez. The recommendation is Heather Severs. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Heather Severs.
Mr. Wallner?
Heather Severs.
Mr. Massey?
Heather Severs.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Heather Severs.
And the chair is Heather Severs.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as an associate member.
Oh, we were.
Oh, no, we're going to skip that, she said.
Mr. Chairman, I rescind my motion.
All right. Mr. O'Leary, mobile.
Home rent control board, again, we made an appointment last meeting and we still are looking for applicants, so we'll add that to the advertisement. Thank you very much.
So, sustainability committee, it says.
Mr. O'Leary, I volunteered to be on that rent control last, last meeting. Have you any considerations of that thought?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll just get some, I think we're going to get some clarification from council, which is fine.
What's the clarification for?
Just as a voting member and how that works.
Okay. You guys are voting members in committees?
I understand.
Okay.
Did you check the pads of yours?
Fill out the.
Which one?
You want to fill this, you really want to.
Fill out your cap.
No. You know I will.
That's okay, that's good.
Which one of the voting member, like the CIPC?
The taxation aid committee.
Taxation aid committee.
EDC has one.
Hillview Commission.
No, not Hillview Commission, no, Hillview Commission is not the case anymore. But anyway, it wasn't, it was a long time ago.
But just get clarification, because you asked for it last time, so we can have that. Because I'd rather somebody be, like, four boards are better than two thirds. Okay? So, on the next one, it says, Mr. Wallner?
Should you succeed at getting appointed, you can become liaison.
Per, per Mr. Rogers, no appointments appropriate this time?
Nope, it changed.
Lock the doors, we speak.
Okay.
Right on cue.
Step right up.
Look at that timing, that's great.
You did that on purpose.
Hi, please.
I got lucky, I don't always get it right. So, I assume this is about the appointment of Meredith Burns. She seems like a terrific candidate. She actually, sustainability is part of her day job. She's the chief sustainability person at a large, at, at a company that, subsidiaries you would have heard of, I think, and just seems really committed to, to applying some of those skills to, to the community here. So, I would ask for your vote to appoint her to the one remaining seat on this committee, which is as an associate member for a three-year stint. I think that's the way we do it these days.
Any, I can take further discussion after the motion. Mr. Massey, can you do the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as an associate member to the sustainability committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2027. We have one opening, Meredith Burns, Clarissa Morello.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Meredith Burns is the recommendation, Mr. Wallner?
On, discussion?
Yeah, yeah, discussion.
Yeah, no, I just, can you just tell us what your, how many full members now and how many associate members?
So, we have, we have seven full members in seven slots and we have three slots, two are filled and this would fill the third.
So, 10 total.
So, 10 total.
That's great, congratulations.
Yeah, that's really.
Thank you all for your support, your, your wisdom in renaming the committee Sustainability and broadening the mission. I think it's really attracted a broad, a broad swath of.
Really has worked very well. Again, we appreciate your stewardship and your willing us to continue instead of indefinitely now for a fixed term.
Yeah, yes.
Going through that.
And, and your articles in the papers have been terrific.
And it's not just me, we now have multiple members, multiple members are, are writing those sustainability columns and I think it's a, it's, it's one way we're trying to get out the messages about, about the opportunities we see in the space.
Fantastic, great, thank you, yeah. No other comment than that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Meredith Burns.
Mr. Wallner?
Meredith Burns.
Mr. Massey?
Meredith Burns.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Meredith Burns.
And the chair is Meredith Burns.
Okay.
Transportation committee?
Yeah, this one's interesting.
We have names, I thought we had names.
It's a liaison.
It's there.
Not on this.
Transportation?
Oh, no, it is, I'm sorry, no, okay. And we're going to go for the.
Which slot for?
We're going to go for the short, we're going to honor what she wants, she wants to short-term.
Start shorter.
Yeah, so we're doing the one, they're both the same, we're going to do the second one, which is 2026.
Motion.
So, that's the only motion we're doing?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have that one, Mr. Massey, please?
2026.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as full members to the transportation committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. Two openings. Nazanin Mossehibi?
Yep. And so.
Hold on, some. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, just, Lillian, she runs the transportation committee, she wants more time to find more people, candidates to fill the second spots, so she's good with Nazanin, but wants to look for more going forward.
Mr. O'Leary?
Nazanin Mossehibi?
Mr. Wallner?
Nazanin Mossehibi.
Mr. Massey?
Nazanin Mossehibi.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Nazanin Mossehibi.
And the chair, Nazanin Mossehibi.
Just want to quickly introduce myself, Nazanin Mossehibi.
Oh. I was just going to ask, I was like, ooh.
It's an honor to be here and I hope that, I mean, thanks for the opportunity and I'll do my best to serve the people of Northridge.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, I come from 23 years of transportation background, I worked for MBTA for seven years. So, I was on the other side of the table as you mentioned, on this side, yeah.
Well, this is one of our most important committees.
Yes, I definitely understand that.
On many fronts, so thank you for stepping up.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for volunteering, that's great.
Glad to be here.
We can email soon and tell you when you can come and get sworn in.
Sure.
And you're in.
And how, just so we know, how do you approach making, please just, the motion, Mr. Wallner?
Everyone did perfectly, Nazanin Mossehibi.
Oh, great.
Nazanin?
Nazanin, it means charming, so if you forget Nazanin, you can call me charming.
I think I might just do that.
But I go by Naz, so it's easier.
You go by Naz, that's easier.
You go by Naz?
I go, I go by Naz.
But I'll try.
That's cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, veterans, veterans committee, Ms. Gonzalez?
Veterans, veterans committee is full membership. There are three associate openings, but we'll venture that in January.
Water commission?
Oh, Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, do we need to include veterans events in any sort of advertising or do we have a pool of candidates?
I'm not, I'd have to talk to, I'll talk to the chair about that.
Okay. I just see.
I know, yeah, we went through the list and, you know, yeah, we might need to do that.
We probably won't do so for another week or two, so that's fine.
Water commission, Mr. O'Leary, you want?
Water commission, we've been asked by the chair, or suggested by the chair to defer this particular point. I believe there's one, one person we haven't heard from, incumbent we haven't heard from, but the other person has expressed an interest, but not been able to get in touch with them, so we shall defer at this particular point in time. But I believe we concur. Breakfast, the chairman.
Correct. Youth services committee. Mr. Wallner?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as a full member to the youth services committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Two openings. Monica Bado, Francis Ferraro, incumbent, Ellen Schrantz, and Amy Solomon, incumbent.
Yep.
Second.
I need a second, you can't second your own motion.
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez, any further discussion, Mr. Wallner?
So, this is the first set of two, the next set is two as well. And I have talked with Lil, Eleanor, and Peter about these nominations. And the biggest thing about this is that youth services committee is more than advisory committee, they're there to provide hours to help support Eleanor and actually do other programs. And so, all the four people I'm going to be recommending of all committee, they understand they need to give hours to Eleanor to make their programs happen. And so, I'm good with the people that are being named.
We also want to acknowledge Jason Slattery's service for the number of years that he's served on the other committee and is not returning, unfortunately, because he's been a very active and productive member for a number of years, we appreciate his service.
Yep, Jason actually now is coming over to the commission on disability, so he's going to be serving on there, which is great. Very, very good person I have on board, so I'm glad to have him.
Just a quick question, Amy and Francis, they incumbent, are they not running again or are they just being?
Here's the second set, he'll be on the second set.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Monica Bado, Ellen Schrantz.
Mr. Wallner?
Monica Bado, Ellen Schrantz.
Mr. Massey?
Monica Bado and Ellen Schrantz.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Monica Bado, Ellen Schrantz.
And the chair is Monica Bado and Ellen Schrantz.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as full member to the youth services committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2027. We have Monica Bado, Francis Ferraro, incumbent, Ellen Schrantz, and Amy Solomon, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further, further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, these are incumbents and, you know, by our procedures, actually by our guidelines, it is encouraged to renominate incumbents who have served us and served us well, because they have experience and have given their time and they should be, they should be reappointed.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Francis Ferraro, Amy Solomon.
Mr. Wallner?
Francis Ferraro, Amy Solomon.
Mr. Massey?
Francis Ferraro, Amy Solomon.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Francis Ferraro, Amy Solomon.
And the chair is Francis Ferraro, Amy Solomon. Wrap that up. On the next agenda item that I'm going to give to Mr. Gilberto, Mr. Gilberto, if you could please share, you know, when you, when you introduce it of why we're going to be having the actual discussion at the next meeting after the CPC has time to view it and then, you know, that's kind of something where we're going to, about it, we're just going to give you a description of it tonight and that we're going to move on just because we're not in a position yet to have this discussion.
Sure, absolutely. We are still looking at a special town meeting on Monday, January 27th. We had a draft warrant that we have going, but there are three items that we're still working through. We have talked with our print company and they have told us that they will be able to meet the, the requirements for notice about sending the, printing and sending out the warrants so that they arrive two weeks prior to town meeting, so we still plan to do that. Our plan is to ask the board to sign the warrant on Monday, January 6th, which is the next regular board meeting. The issues that we're working through, the accessory dwelling unit, I think everybody knows, that's continuing to evolve by the day at this point as information becomes available, including an informational webinar that I believe is being hosted tomorrow that we will be represented at. I know town council's been providing feedback to the CPC and most importantly, we want to give the CPC the ability to, to consider all of the information that's out there on this to the extent that we're able to do so. And I do want to thank the CPC, I know Mr. Griffin is here, you've put, I know, multiple meetings discussing the ADU and taking the feedback, and I know you had voted a recommendation, I know a bit of a curveball's gotten thrown our way with some of the details. Again, the idea being that there would be something coming to the, to the board for town meeting within the restrictions of the now state law regarding ADUs. Second issue is relative to floodplain bylaw required by the National Flood Insurance Program. We have a draft that we've created and have submitted to the Department of Conservation and Recreation that needs to be approved, so once we get that back, that'll also be able to be reviewed with, by the CPC, and then ultimately forwarded in a final form, rather than a placeholder that you saw in the draft warrant, and then the final item I'll just refer to is that we did have an item that came up last week, which would be to seek authority to enter into a payment into a taxes agreement, uh, for a development that was permitted by the CPC earlier this fall for battery storage over at River Park, um, we, some of you remember, we did this over at Chestnut Street a few years ago, this would be more of a blanket authorization, but we do have a specific project that's come up that I think we should talk about in detail on January sixth, so that's sort of the, the quick summary, um, the two other articles that we'll be holding on there, um, that are more routine in nature, three actually, a prior year bill, um, which I believe will have one bill that will come up, and then both operating and capital budget amendments, although I think at this point in time, we don't have any specific amendments in mind, um, you know, so for the public who may see that article, there may not be a lot of detail printed in there, again, that's more of a placeholder in case something comes up, um, to the extent we know any details, we'll certainly share, uh, share them at the time of the meeting, at the next meeting, so, thank you.
And also, I'd like to add that I did speak to Chair David Roboff from the CPC, and he appreciated and, uh, agreed to, uh, that they need to, uh, I believe, um, they're going to have a virtual meeting to discuss the, the last things that had to be added that the CPC yet didn't see the final draft, so just wanted to show some of its momentum.
Mr. Chairman, through you, as we go into licensing renewals, we have, uh...
We do have a motion of the sudden meeting date.
I, I would not recommend voting that.
For that, even though the...
Yeah, vote to call the meeting and vote to sign the warrant at the same time.
All right.
So, thank you both for catching that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have an approximate time when the meeting might be?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be seven o'clock P M. on Monday, January twenty seventh, yeah, that, that's actually the, really the only date that was available.
It was voted right onto my calendar.
Hopefully, everybody has that.
Just in case, we got new, oh, we forgot.
Making sure it shows up.
The, the winter activity season, um, really takes up the use of the facility, so we don't have many choices, but I want to thank the schools for accommodating for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Valero, what do you say?
So I was just going to say, um, as maybe a transition into the license renewals, um, there is a new face sitting here to my left, who will be, um, joining us for Board meetings as the Board's recording, Secretary, um, Ani, who is a resident here in North Reading, um, and has started working for us last Wednesday, um, in the office, so she'll be working in the office, part-time schedule, um, supporting the Board, um, for both licensing and for appointments, and also helping, uh, Jen and I, so Ani, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Welcome, welcome.
She's gotten a three, three or four day, three-day crash course on licensing since last Wednesday, um, we're really glad that you're here, um, there's been a lot of responsibility on Jen's shoulders, um, and in the midst of all of that, she's still managed to plan a town hall Christmas party, um, so, I do...
Priorities, important.
We, you'll still be hearing from Jennifer, but, um, very soon, she won't be joining us on Monday nights, she'll be able to focus on her, on her day job, so we'll miss you, uh, but thank you for your hard work. And Ani, welcome, welcome. All right, so the good news is, we have only one establishment that had an outstanding issue, so what you're about to see before us is gonna take us right through renewals for all but one establishment, and I, I'm optimistic that that one establishment will resolve its issues, um, prior to, uh, expiration, so we'll get to that last.
Mr. Massey?
Does that one, um, business, is that taken out of these?
Uh, it, it should be.
It has its own special motion at the end.
If we hear it stated, then we will, we'll catch you.
I should read a lot more.
No, no, it's okay.
It's okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common pictorial licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Andrea's House of Pizza, Beyond Bagels Incorporated, Captain's Pizza, P H Wealth Incorporated, D B A Chinese Cuisine Incorporated, Cowabunga's Entertainment L L C, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donut Seventh L L C, Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading Main Hop L L C, Young Juan Bros Incorporated, D B A Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, V N R North Reading L L C, D B A Horseshoe Lounge, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge, Wayama Group L L C, D B A Mario's Restaurante, Nan Center Cafe, Ashmer Sons Incorporated, D B A Nick's Place, Ryers Market L L C, D B A Ryers Store, Starbucks Coffee, number one nine eight four five, Mass three four five seven one Sub Incorporated, D B A Subway three four five seven one, The Hornet's Nest, The Lobster Claw Seafoods Incorporated, McDonald's, Wendy's, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, D B A Sports Spirits and Steaks, Kylie's Coffee, D B A Heavenly Donuts, North Reading Sub, D B A Subway of North Reading Incorporated, Grill nineteen Yever Group L L C, D B A Teresa's Prime Grill nineteen.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
All fine establishments, glad they're in town, hope they thrive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common pictueller slash all alcohol license to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Young Juan Bros Incorporated, D B A Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge Incorporated, P H Wealth Incorporated, D B A Chinese Cuisine Incorporated, Wayama, Wayama Group L L C, D B A Mario's Restaurante, V N R North Reading L L C, D B A Horseshoe Lounge, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, D B A Sports Spirits and Steaks, Grill nineteen Yever Group L L C, D B A Teresa's Prime Grill nineteen.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, should be you, I said. Any further discussion?
Does this include, does this include the, uh, people we're talking about?
Nope.
He does not, nope.
You have a lot more reading.
I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, my apologies, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following general on-premise alcohol licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Ultra Chic Events L L C, D B A Ultra Chic Events at Hillview Country Club.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Massey, this is why I meant about doing them all, so you don't have to read all this twice, over two meetings, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class One licenses to expire January first, twenty twenty six, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Brian DeChac, D B A National Sales, Malconian Subaru, Bobcat of Boston Incorporated, North Reading Motorsports.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to record to show, please, that I will be recusing myself and not participating in the discussion or deliberations of the Board on the Class One or Class Two licenses, as I have a family member who holds a Class Two license, and all Class One licenses have the same authority as Class Two, so I will not participate in the deliberations of the Board, and I will be abstaining.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Class Two license, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Class Two licenses to expire January first, twenty twenty six, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Alka Motor Vehicles Sales L L C, Nika Incorporated, D B A Route twenty-eight Motors, Brian DeChac, D B A National Sales, A and J Motors Incorporated, P and T Auto Sales Incorporated, Sacho Stanci.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Ma, um, Mr. Chair, I move to renew the following Class Three license to expire January first, twenty twenty six, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Brian DeChac, D B A National Sales.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Automatic amusement devices, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Andrea's House of Pizza, Cowabunga's Entertainment L L C, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, D B A Sports Spirits and Steaks, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store alcohol licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, One Stop Liquors Incorporated, East Gates, Will North Reading L L C, D B A East Gate Liquors, Paradise R Two Incorporated, D B A New England Beverage, and Redemption.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Package store wine and malt beverage, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Divyage Incorporated, D B A Christopher's Market, R S S Convenience Incorporated, D B A Convenience Plus, Joe's Quick Mart's Mass L L C, D B A Joe's Quick Mart's number five one four, Ryers Market L L C, D B A Ryers Store, Aria and Julie Incorporated, D B A Route twenty-eight, Lucky Mart.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fraternal Club, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following fraternal club all alcohol license to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jukebox license, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following jukebox license to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Loyal Order of Moose.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Amazing, we still have to license jukeboxes.
I love it.
What about major responsibilities that we're about to, about to complete?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sunday Entertainment, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following Sunday Entertainment licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Grill nineteen Yever Group L L C, D B A Teresa's Prime Grill nineteen, Ultra Chic Events L L C, D B A Ultra Chic Events at Hillview Country Club, Wayama Group L L C, D B A Mario's Restaurante.
Second?
V N R North Reading L L C, D B A Horseshoe Lounge.
Now.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Am I just trying to move this along?
Outstanding issues, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following, uh, licenses to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Dos Lobos L L C, D B A Apothecary Hills Brewery Kitchen, Common Pictueller, Common Pictueller Hall of Alcohol, Automatic Amusements and Sunday License, and to further instruct the Town Administrator to notify said, uh, said licenses that if they do not submit our required paperwork by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, the license will not be released, you know, be ordered to cease all business operations.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gilberto?
Um, just for information, we're aware that the license holder is, uh, looking to come into compliance with a few remaining outstanding issues, and we're optimistic that that will happen before December thirty first, uh, and upon the notification being received, if that's the case, we'll release the license.
Is there any, is there any relief we can give?
Through you, um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, the Board has a discretion to simply renew the license, it hasn't been the practice when there's been an issue identified, but it, you're the licensing authority, not me.
What is the issue?
I believe there's a, a few, um, building code, and a building code and possibly accessibility-related issues that need to be addressed, fixture in the bathroom is one thing, I don't know, Jen, do you have more detail you could share?
Um, the paper towel holder in the ladies' room needs to be replaced, there's a light in the kitchen and a light in the men's room.
That's it?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, but, hold on, though, but why can't they just get those done quick, I mean, I can go to log rings and stop by, I mean, there might be early meeting, but...
Pop over after the meeting, I suppose.
I don't know, for something that, for something like that, that's like so simple, like, I feel like I, I want to keep the restrictions, because it's like, come on, man.
I think it's not a good position to take to the businesses in our towns.
Did they say they were gonna fix it?
If it was major health code, etc., I mean, these are paper towel dispensers, uh, you know, lights, these could all be temporary measures of a plug and light, these could have paper towels outside of something fastened.
One is a safety issue in the kitchen.
For lights?
The light, yes.
Yeah, I get that.
So, it's not just a light bulb situation.
That's the building inspector?
In special things, yes, it's a building code thing, it's, you know, it's not something you can just pick up at Walmart, light bulb.
Generally speaking, we have, over the years, we've had issues such as this, the important thing, I think, is that we're consistent across the board with all of our licensees and how we handle the applications, and we're not necessarily making an exception for one, when the others are, may have been forced to come into compliance on a timely basis prior to coming before the Board, you know, I'm confident that it's gonna be taken care of, and the license will be issued, um...
If it wasn't a building inspector thing, like a code, I think I'd be more open to it, but if it's a code thing, and then God forbid something happens and we allow it, then it comes back here, I don't think, I don't think we can take that type of liability for the town.
Could be an electrical issue.
Just need a couple more.
You just need to be consistent.
Everybody tends to get it done before the thirty first.
I think the more strict we are on businesses in town, it doesn't, doesn't help, I mean, that's my personal opinion from campaigning, speaking to a lot of businesses, I, I, a lot of businesses do very well for us here, and, uh, I'm, I'm at a tough, I don't even want, I don't want to go, obviously, above the building inspector's head, I'm just, I don't want this business to get shut down, this is, I'm, I'm not, I'm vote, no.
They won't get shut down.
I'm vote, no.
They'll, they'll have a fix.
I just, I just motioned.
They've been working on it for a few weeks, so they're, they'll have it done.
I hope they don't, because I just bought a lot of gift cards, though, so, say that. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. O, uh, if, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Nay.
Next motion, please, Mr. Massey, and you.
Approve A B C C renewal or certification, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign the A B C C twenty twenty five renewal certification?
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Can you just give me a quick, real digest version on what an A B C C is?
Ms. Valero?
So, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission is the state authority that regulates liquor licenses, we are report, required to report to them manually with regard to renewal or non-renewal, so it's a standard form.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. O'Leary, second, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, all parties sought to renew their licenses, as you, so, thank you, a good sign for businesses in North Reading.
Approve A B C C twenty twenty four seasonal population increase form, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign the A B C C twenty twenty five seasonal population increase form.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Just trying to find, uh, this document.
There's a form in the packet.
Do you know what, uh, what page it will be on?
Lay down.
Lay down?
Do you have a page number?
No, I was, I was waiting.
I was way down.
So this.
It's just every, every provider just makes a commitment.
But why, why season?
They're required for.
Who's that?
Did we read that second motion yet? I don't know.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. On the meeting minutes, we are only going to read the ones for the eighteenth. We're going to give a little bit more time for December second for.
Mr. Chairman, could I actually ask for all the, I, I.
Uh, we can't.
No, you're right. I'm sorry.
No, we got, I can't. That puts us out on, on November eighteenth. It puts us out of compliance. Yep. And also for, although it will be more than thirty days when we do the second, on January sixth, because it is before the third meeting since then, we will still be in compliance, just in case anybody's wondering nationwide. So.
So which one are we doing?
We're doing the eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstaining from Mrs. Gonzalez. And review up. Review upcoming meeting schedule. Mr. Goberno?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, January sixth. The week, the meeting following would ordinarily be on Monday, January twentieth. That is a overstate federal holiday, so we're not able to meet that week, that day, excuse me. So we should identify another day for that meeting to happen. Keep in mind, that meeting would likely be the warrant article informational hearing for the town meeting that will take place the following Monday, January twenty seventh. So I don't know if we want to look, you know, to the Tuesday or the Wednesday or.
What works for everyone?
I could do Tuesday.
Does anybody have a preference on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Twenty first.
Tuesday, the twenty first, okay, everyone? Okay. Mr. Goberno, let's put that down then.
Excellent. And then the next meeting would be on the third by Board Policy. And then the following meeting would be the seventeenth, which would be President's Day holiday. And for anyone to whom the schedule matters, it's also a school vacation week. So we should think about how we want to handle that.
We moved it last year for the week.
We did move it for the week last year, yeah. One thing to keep in mind is if we're going to do that, we have heard feedback about taking over the, you know, conflicting with the school committee, which would be the twenty fourth. So if we were going to do that, we might want to consider the twenty fifth or twenty sixth.
What do you mean by conflicting the same one?
Oh, so it's.
Not have it on the same night?
The school committee meeting the same night.
Hold on here.
I know a few folks have asked if it's possible to not have the meeting conflicted.
Uh, what, okay, again.
February.
Okay. Again, does Tuesday, the twenty fifth work? No, wait, Tuesday, no, they have it on Monday. Does Tuesday, the twenty fifth work?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Third and the twenty fifth?
Yeah.
And then by Board Policy, our meeting schedule would be the third and seventeenth of March. Mr. Chairman, I know that there has been some initial conversation between you and I regarding the budget hearings, and I think you had wanted to bring up the possibility of the police fire DPW hearings occurring on.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I can take that.
Did you say the seventeenth?
Yes, the third and seventeenth.
St. Patrick's Day?
That would be the day.
Do we get to have green beer?
Green beer.
We're not allowed to have alcohol in public. Public.
To ourselves?
So regarding the budget hearing, it is, the last few years are, I don't even know how many years, it's been on the Saturday. But I am going to see schedule permitting if we can just add the DPW fire police over two meetings into our regular ones. I know, I know Saturday mornings are not important to some, but they are very difficult for others.
They were.
So it's just something where we're going to take a look at it. And take, take it from there. So and as we get a little bit closer, we'll make a final decision. We'll talk about it as a board. And, but that, that's kind of what I'm seeing. Because also, again, I haven't talked to Mrs. Goberno, but the Finance Committee has a lot of new members, and a lot of them are going to have the same conflicts. So. So we are just looking into that. Do you want to do April or just wait?
So April, the first would be the seventh, and then the second, the third would be the twenty first, which is the Patriots' Day holiday. So we wouldn't be able to meet that day. And Jen, if you use that, send out the dates out here.
She said the seventh.
The seventh, and then we would ordinarily meet the twenty first, but that is a Patriots' Day holiday, so we're not able to meet that day. Whether we choose to meet that same week or again, go to the following week, in which case probably Tuesday rather than Monday.
Because of?
It's a school vacation week for those to whom it matters.
Okay.
Twenty eighth.
The twentieth is the Monday.
Yeah.
Right, is that what you're saying?
It'd be the twenty ninth. Again, we don't want to conflict with the school committee meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I missed the discussion. What is the, the issue with conflicting with the school committee meeting? I mean, other than some people like to tune into both?
Yeah.
Correct. So if we can, if we can. They were the smart ones that did it over, you know, school vacations, not us. So they don't have to meet.
They're still committed. They were meeting the same time as I saw most of them.
Yeah, so and there's people that want to tune into both. So I, I, I think it's an easy fix as long as.
But what is once in a while? I mean, we were doing it every week. I think if it's once in a, if it's a couple of meetings.
Hold off on that second April date.
Okay.
And then we'll take it from there. Because Mrs. Gonzalez is right. I mean, like that, for a while there, because of the calendar, I don't know how we got, so whatever, but.
We, we had been meeting second and fourth because of the multiple holidays, and that, that's why, but it causes a conflict. We do it.
Okay. And then just pick the first, and then we'll wait the first, that Monday before Election Day? On, in May?
That would be.
Be May fifth, with the election be May sixth, yes.
May sixth, yeah.
And then May nineteenth.
Um, what about strategic planning?
That we were, we were going to choose.
Eighth.
A January date. Did we have a preliminary date? We didn't want to pick one because you weren't here.
I don't think we had a preliminary date.
No, we were going to wait for, Mrs. Gonzalez, so we were going to wait to decide on a new date.
I thought we had.
Okay, that's good.
I had the eighth now.
So the eighth was for a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee regarding budget.
Is that still on?
That's still on, yes. So sorry, to be clear, that, that meeting is still scheduled.
What is that?
It's a joint meeting with the School Committee and the Finance Committee regarding budget.
What?
Wednesday, January eighth.
And what's the other meeting we're talking about?
The second part. The second part of the strategic.
Second strategic plan.
Yeah.
Was we keeping that date?
For the, for the eighth?
Uh, night, uh, two days from now?
No. That one we canceled last, two weeks ago, whenever we were here. Was that the second? Sorry, I'm losing it. December is just, oh, one big day.
Just not rescheduled again?
Right.
We're going to reschedule it now. I'll try to right now. How about that following, well, we have a meeting, but one way or the other, we're going to have two meetings in one week, which is fine. But actually, no, the following week in January, the thirteenth, we don't have a meeting, do we? No, right?
No.
Six and twenty, right?
So.
So twenties were closed.
Does that one, the third day work for people?
The sixteenth?
Fifteenth or sixteenth?
Fifteenth, no, sixteenth, yes.
Sixteenth works?
Sixteen for you, Mrs. Gonzalez?
So Thursday?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I can make that work.
Yep.
I can make it work. It'll be Thursday evening, right? At late afternoon, what time?
I think last time we talked about if we could start at like at five, but we could push it to six if we had to.
No, it's probably earlier better for me to be distracted.
So is five okay on that day? The sixteenth?
First of May?
Okay, absolutely.
The sixteenth.
Yes, sixteenth of January.
Strategic planning meeting?
All right.
Strategic planning meeting at five?
Yes. And Mr. Goberno, if you can.
Menus to follow.
All right.
I might create a thank you for that.
Good thing we have all the dates.
She was writing the mic.
We'll send them to the board, all those.
We will send an email tomorrow.
But I have Monday, the sixth, this regular meeting. Wednesday, the eighth is a joint meeting. Thursday, the sixteenth, five P M, continuation of strategic planning.
Yeah.
Then Tuesday, the twenty first of January, correct?
Yes.
I think we should revisit that and maybe revisit the month.
Then on one twenty seven, we have a special time meeting.
Yes.
One twenty seven, special time meeting. And we have February, the third and the twenty fifth, which is a Tuesday. So Monday, the third, Tuesday, the twenty fifth. In March, we have Monday, the third, St. Patrick's Day on Monday, seventeenth, right? April, we have Monday, the seventh, and the second meeting in April to be determined.
Correct.
And then we have May fifth, which is a Monday, and May nineteenth.
Yep.
And we haven't done anything with the Saturday budget meeting other than you don't think you want to have it.
I want to have it, just not on a Saturday.
Got it. Thank you.
I think, that's what I have.
Mr. Goberno?
I have two items to report to the board. First is that I have been approached by members and staff of the Conservation Commission with regard to workload for the staff in the office, particularly the conservation agent. I think folks may know, we had a part-time contracted conservation agent for a number of years. We advertised the position as a part-time contracted position. We didn't get any interest. Then we re-advertised the position as a part-time position and didn't get any interest. Then we increased the hours and re-advertised the position, and we did get some interest for an eighteen-hour position. And what's been reported to me, and we've reviewed with the staff here in the town hall as well, that the workload both for conservation, but also for town-owned land, which Mrs. Marlin in my office handled for a number of years for requests, would now be transitioning to Mrs. McNair. We have an opportunity that we're looking at for transitioning that work to be facilitated on a more regular basis by the conservation agent. Talked with the Finance Director that there is a funding source through conservation fees to fund the additional hours in the position, to make the position the equivalent of a full-time position doing both conservation and town-owned land. I think the board members know, the town-owned land has been a struggle over the years, and we sort of got diverted by the issues associated with the glam and the forty B. That being behind us, we have a backlog of requests of people who are looking to move on it, and I think to have a professional employee who's kind of dedicated to it and free up our office from having to try to manage it and catch ads, catch hen way that we have been, would be in our benefit. There is quite, there is a bit of built-up revenue from conservation fees that could support this for a few years in addition to the funding that we've already established in town meetings. So that is a direction that we are looking to go with and with that, that particular position. That's a revolving fund, and there's also a special revenue fund that do not require appropriation to town meetings. So I'm bringing it up here. It doesn't need to go to town meetings for approval, but it will be presented that way in the future for town meeting in June. So I just want to update folks on that. And then second, to let folks know, and I know there was quite a bit of community discussion about it. We've had quite a bit of conversation about the issue of, you know, what impact MBTA zoning might have on, you know, our ability to compete for grants. We did have an instance come up where we were awarded a grant by a state agency. It was for ADA accessibility improvements at the senior center. Staff was actually telling us not to worry about the issue from a standpoint of, you know, you know, compliance because we're complying as of this point in time. And unfortunately, it was fine print in the contract, which basically said that the, I signed the contract, it'd be obligating us to comply with MBTA communities' requirements, which I'm not comfortable doing for, I think, very obvious reasons based upon the vote that took place. I am consulting with town council on it to see, you know, whether there's some sort of approach that I, I can't see that might address that issue, but do feel an obligation to bring it up. It was a grant application. We had the staff telling us, don't worry about it. And then we had a written document that said something else. And for very obvious reasons, I was suspicious of that when I saw it. So I just, again, felt an obligation to disclose more than anything else. And that concludes my comments.
Not a lot of money?
It was fifty-five thousand dollars.
As, as these come up, we should be keeping a record of these. We should have a running record of every time we're being affected by the MBTA communities not being able to get a grant. However you want to call it.
However you want to call it.
What do you want, what do you want to do with that info?
Yeah.
I think it'd be good for the town to understand, to know that. They should be aware of what's, what's going on. Why wouldn't we, why would we want to hide that? It would make total sense that we keep an inventory of what goes on.
Do you take a record of other things that are disposed later? Do you take?
That's all.
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice holiday.
Do we have to hang around the side all these things?
Yes, you don't go anywhere.